I'm not a very political person. I am an individual that just enjoys my countryside and enjoys my farming friends. And I'm not an urbanite or a tree hugger, and I'm not an activist. So a lot of these things, these mechanisms in which to do this are pretty foreign to me. I guess I'm more personally in favor of having a moratorium and giving time to think about it, taking a look around and saying, "How are other states, how are other districts, how are other counties dealing with it?" And use the best of all of them. We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Oh, is it?
We just need a wheel.
I know this is very important to you, and our information is very valuable. And we have this time, we're going to 10 minutes per speaker. We might have a little time for questions asked. It starts right at 4:30, and actually it's almost 5:00 up. So the remaining speakers might want to be a little bit shorter. Just a suggestion.
One thing I want to sort of bring out here and make clear is we've had a son that's worked with confined feeding for 15 years. And I've been to a lot of confined feeding operations, and I saw some very good ones. So I just want the people here to know that I'm not against confined feeding operations. I think it's a must for to feed the people in this country a way to produce pork and beef and poultry. But the sites that I have been to, through Kentucky, Tennessee, Indiana, I have never came into one that was located in such an urban area and also with the type of soils that we have located here.
Macarere is a dairy farmer. We went from 20 to 60 cows. We thought that was growth. If we had us eight missus, we probably would have went to 150 to 200 cows, more growth. The father, as you can see, father time's kind of caught up the feed. When cow numbers get into the thousands for dairy farms, it is no longer a dairy farm. It is the birth of a new industrial enterprise. It is now a milk factory. And I feel our ordinances and laws have not been able to keep up.
Last week was an opportunity for the proponents of this dairy factory to present their case before the county council. We were led to believe that it was a closed committee meeting at which no one could speak, and so we sat very quietly while a number of misstatements were made, only to find out later that it was indeed, after the committee meeting had been closed, it was indeed an open meeting, and we could have addressed some of those issues right then and there. Instead, we took the opportunity to write a letter to the county council addressing each one of the misstatements made in that meeting, trying to set the record straight. And today is our opportunity to voice our concerns, and they're hopefully listening.
Everyone knows that St. Joe County is faced with the prospect of a 24/7 operation consisting of 3,500 cows, opening manure pits the size of four city square blocks, traffic equivalent to more than 10,000 cars daily on our roads, not to mention the potential plenty flooding of Viner's and other people's farmland, the risk of contaminated water involved in March as well, the drying up of jelly swell, the nauseous smell of potential occurrence of hydrogen sulfide poisoning to Sue's, Carl, and the work of the dairy. The risk of an actual damming to Valerie's car, the devaluation of 164 homes in the area, and everyone's quality of rural life.
As Mr. Schrock himself confided to us in writing, and I quote, "Peter will simply do the bare minimum required of him."
We firmly believe that the parcel of land selected by the proponents of this dairy is unsuitable for such a huge industrial operation. The starting question sits next to a 100-year flood plain with highest, highly porous muck soils and a seasonal water table of zero to three feet, creating an enormous risk of groundwater contamination to the Canakin Key watershed, possible with Lakeville municipal well, and numerous private wells in addition. The ditch that runs along the proposed site drains several thousand acres of highly productive farmland, which will be rendered unusable once that ditch is flooded from just the stormwater coming off the buildings and concrete surface area of the proposed dairy. The enormous open area of sewage lagoon proposed to this dairy will present a huge public health threat due to the inevitable plague of flies and mosquitoes and odor and maggots carrying illnesses such as the West Nile virus. The USDA submitted a report to the Journal of Mosquito Control Association that various bait traps were used to determine what is most effective with use. Report reads that cow manure and water from the dairy wastewater lagoon collected the largest number of mosquitoes. The American Public Health Association urged state and local governments and health agencies to put a moratorium on UKFOs because of the risks to public health. There are 41 homes within one mile of the proposed site whose property values are at risk, over 160 within two miles. I submit to you that the quality of life doesn't matter if there's one or two or 160 homes at risk.
So with an open mind and a keen ear, I listened and I read. And I learned that the proponents of this industrial operation did in fact promise jobs and positive economic impact in exchange for land, roads, access, power, and other factors required by the KFO. Folks, these are just promises. Promises based upon asymmetrical information. In other words, unenforceable contracts that are based upon one party providing the information and the other party blindly accepting. The result is what economists call a moral hazard. The cost of failed promises becomes the burden of the believers. What he went on to learn is that the economic characteristics of the KFO are fundamentally incompatible with regional economic development. Regional economic development proceeds on the premise that the wages paid and purchases made by a company are transferred to other individuals or companies in the regions. This multiplier effect they are referring to assumes that money is spent within the confines of the region, and it does not leak into other areas of the state or nation. And KFOs are unlikely to satisfy this assumption for the following reasons. As a capital-intensive company, the KFO is designed to minimize the numbers of workers and hence minimize its employment impact on the region. It has been stated that two-thirds of the jobs created at this dairy will be unskilled labor. In addition, the size of the employment multiplier further depends on the purchases made in the region. The KFOs are more likely to purchase their inputs from a greater distance away. The numerous tax exemptions, such as tax exemptions on their animals, feeds, agricultural machinery, tools, utilities, and fuel, boilers, pumps, pipes that draw water, lastly forget pollution control equipment, are all possible because KFOs are sometimes treated as industrial and sometimes treated as farms. This significantly decreases the amount of tax paid locally. In addition, this site is proposing to locate in an area of St. Joe County that has the lowest tax rate of non-residential real property and business personal property in relation to all 41 taxing jurisdictions in St. Joe County. And yet at the same time, the operations of the KFO can create social, health, and infrastructure costs that the local government must finance. And thirdly, fundamental business practices called prudent spending. Margins of farming demand even more conscious, cross-conscious evaluations of purchasing goods and supplies. Rarely, if ever, do good businesspeople agree to long-term contracts in which buying supplies on just neighborly premises. Financially, St. Joe's KFOs use out-of-area suppliers or other members of their organization to maximize price purchasing. It is not unreasonable to have a KFO use the lowest-cost supplier who ships into the region. The same link the KFO uses to bring in supplies into the region is also used to ship substitutes out of the region.
I'll try and explain myself a little bit about the contour of the land. I lived in the area since 1939 except for four years. So in this proposed site, I have helped, well, I don't go far. So I feel I am very educated on the type of soils and the fall of the land. I would like to explain to you the contour and fall of the land from Miami Road to the proposed walnut grove dairy. Miami Road is one of the highest points in Union Township. And one of the lowest points in Union Township is located on the west side of the East Bunch Ditch that borders the proposed site. This results in a 30-foot fall off of Miami Road. The reason I bring this up, there's about 600 acres of back land that drains through Mr. Schrock's proposed site. And what you have with heavy rains, or not even heavy rains, but one-inch rains or two-inch rains, you have a lot of surface water coming into this East Bunch Ditch. Now with all the proposed building sites, I just want you to try to imagine the water that's going to go into this East Bunch Ditch. You have four buildings to house these animals that are a little over two football fields long and wide and long, I should say. Every football field is 1.32 acres. You have four buildings proposed with also a milking parlor, which is another large building. For every inch of rain coming off of an acre of land, you have 27,000 gallons of water. So where our farms are and where the Viner's farm is, we have a Philip pine tile which starts as an 18-inch tile, runs through my land, the Viner's land, and the Prin's land, and through Mr. Schrock's land. Once that ditch gets higher than our tiles, we have no rain.
I think today we're being treated very fairly. They have opened the room so that everyone could come in, which was not the case last week, and they seem to be listening to us.
How did they try to control the crowd last week?
It was in a very small room. There was a sheriff at the door to make sure that no more than the posted fire code sign entered the room.
There was what, how many people?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Including proponents of that.
Exactly, exactly. So, but we were very civil, and this meeting too is very civil, and we're pleased to have the opportunity to speak in front of the county council and hear our views.
Whether or not there are facts or moral hazards created by the proposed KFO, what resonates most and is the most profound issue concerning this council is that we, the citizens of St. Joe County, are to concede to IDOM all that needs to be evaluated when citing this KFO. And we ask you that you heed the suggestion of Sarah Simpson, program manager of Regulatory Affairs, Indiana State Department of Agriculture, when she wrote, "Our administration allocates that it should be up to counties to determine if and where they want to allow KFOs in their county. We want to partner with counties to provide them information in making these land use determinations before a KFO wants to locate, not case by case. It is important to the future of our industry that these facilities are cited in a manner that minimizes conflicting uses." She goes on to state, although the state, in this case referring to IDOM, offers our input and support, "The land use determinations expect, except for protection of the water quality of the state, i.e. odor, proximity to residences, traffic, property values, are purely within local control. This is the responsibility we lay at your feet. We are informing you to recognize that, by the proponents' own admission, this type of operation is the future of farming, that KFOs straddle the line between farming and industrial, and that your current input is woefully insufficient and properly citing for this industrialization of agriculture. Gentlemen, it is difficult to deny that remediation is more expensive than preventive action. We need you to seriously consider a moratorium in order to have the proper time to investigate all solutions that will minimize the conflicts and maximize the benefits." Thank you.
Thank you. I have some other questions which I have not seen addressed. We have been told that there won't be too many antibiotics used in this facility, but the lead bait from experience with 3,500 cows, there won't be an Ago body that several of these animals won't need to be treated for something. Will these drugs be passed through the animals in their manure, their waste, into the lagoon, into our tile? I don't know. Also, most dairies use a production-enhancing hormone called BST. Will they use this? I don't know. But now let me think of this, what happens to all these containers, the bottles, the jugs, used syringes, arm-length plastic gloves, which are used for palpating towels and other disposable veterinary equipment? Hospitals have separate disposable methods for contaminating medical supplies and equipment. Will they? I have no idea. Also, many chemicals are involved, such as salts, acids, underwashes. Cleaning agents are very high in phosphates. What happens to these? Do they go into the lagoons? Are they hauled away by spring on the fields? I don't know. Another point that has not been addressed is security or fire protection. Should the perimeter of this site be fenced and gated? What would happen if a small portion of these animals would get out of their stalls or bins? That could be a several-hundred-cow stampede. I've seen the damage that three or four cows can do. Can you imagine what a hundred or several hundred could do? The weak county roads and bridges in this part of the county built over shifting muck land are not suited to the thousands of semi-tractor trips annually necessary to haul in, feed, haul out milk right over for this proposed dairy. The debate of the wheel tax is going to be before you, as of next week, I believe. The proponents of this dairy submit that part of that wheel tax is how they're going to pay for some of the infrastructure and roads. I would be of the time to consider where you stand regarding that. Unfortunately, we, as St. Joseph County citizens, and you as our elected representatives, currently have no say in the citing and approval of such huge industrial operations within our county. Because of the enormous number of animals involved, this dairy qualifies as a KFO, which is, as you have pointed at me, has been comprised of this afternoon of concentrated animal feeding operation. The dairy components must first get a permit from IDOM. IDOM's mandate is strictly limited to the manure and rainwater management. They do not consider groundwater, air quality, the impact on local farms and businesses, property values, private organistible wells, proper land use, or the local infrastructure when issuing these KFO permits. IDOM clearly states that these issues must be addressed at the coming level. Nor can we rely on IDOM to adequately monitor the site once it is up and running. IDOM has 14 inspectors who are responsible for the oversight of more than 2,200 industrial farming operations across the state of Indiana, in addition to landfill waste water treatment plants and other major industrial sites. It seems like a disproportionate number that they have to review. Don't think they can get to the new ones very rapidly. The EPA recently waived all enforcement of clean air and water provisions on over 2,500 KFOs for the next four years. Following this announcement, IDOM's commissioner stated that, due to the confusion over EPA rules governing industrial farms, that IDOM would be suspending certain provisions and penalties on KFOs for the next three years. St. Joseph County is in a highly vulnerable position right now. These industrial farms still fall under the loosely regulated general category of agriculture, not industry. The current zoning laws are written, 10 of the St. Joseph County townships have zoned agriculture areas that would permit a KFO. Therefore, our county's only current mechanism for involvement with the establishment of new, huge industrial farming operations is through the issuance of building permits for livestock farms and manure building specifications of St. Joseph County zoning ordinance. The operation is ended. Under the current ordinances, the proposed 16-acre, 20-million-gallon, open-air sewage lagoon needs to be only 30 feet from neighboring property lines. That's up from here to the wall, sir. There is currently no mechanism in St. Joseph County for you as our elected officials to weigh in on the desirability of any particular site or on any aspect of such a huge industrial operation. The new 2,005 zoning laws, as well as the past zoning laws, treat a defined KFO under the same broad category of confined feeding operation, or CFO. No specific consideration is given to the size of the operation nor to the EPA, and IDOM recognizes classification difference. This broad definition is analogous to industrial siting, giving no consideration to the extensive facilities, noise, odor, dust, heavy traffic, and amounts of outdoor storage. St. Joseph County does have zoning laws that distinguish between light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing. Is this not the same? We're not the first county in Indiana to face this dilemma. Other counties in Indiana and across the Midwest have implemented a variety of different mechanisms to provide for some local input on these types of operations. For example, Alcart County has an A4 confined feeding protection district whose goals are to promote agricultural development and coexistence with residential neighbors. They also have an A5 district for the intensive livestock operation with those same goals. They recognize the impact and, impact difference and have provision for, excuse me. St. Joseph County must do the same, and we're urging you to do that. That's why we strongly suggest you implement an immediate temporary moratorium on all new KFOs coming into St. Joseph County. We ask you that you recognize, by Walnut Grove Dairy's own admission, that this is industrialization and the future of farming. We are not asking you to regulate the size and type of operation, but to properly cite it as you would a manufacturing facility or industry. During this moratorium period, we call for the establishment of a working group, including both farmers and rural residents, to consider the most appropriate mechanism for county-level input on the future agri-industrial development in St. Joseph County. It is imperative that we, as a county, address the potential impact of these huge industrial farms on existing farms, businesses, property values, local infrastructure, private and municipal water supplies at the county level before it is too late. We are not against economic development. We want you to have a say in what's taking place within your county. We feel it's incumbent upon you, as the council members, to protect the quality of life that exists for its residents. Today is better to speak with you this afternoon, and I thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
What I maintain here is what we have is a business very similar to the ethanol plant. Now, when the ethanol plant, which deals with agricultural commodity, we, they were required to improve the roads, they were required to do something to address the smell and water treatment. These people that have the proposed dairy have done nothing like that, and there are no requirements from the press. Okay, I want to throw some real quick pointers at the council. Okay, an average dairy cow will produce 90 pounds of milk a day. This is 2.2 million gallons that will come out of this facility per week. Okay, it will require 40 pounds of feed per day. This is about a million pounds of feed that they require. Okay, by the way, in the legal weight, a semi can haul. Okay, you're at approximately 67 trips of a semi. Now, there are no legal roads for that semi to go on. Okay, the nearest legal roads are State Road 6, 331, and 6. So these people, to transport their product on a semi, are going to have to make 67 trips a week illegal. Okay, now, I'm sure that can be verified by the St. Joseph County Highway Department. Okay, they also stated they were going to use 75 gallons of water per minute. This sounds pretty innocent until you figure out that a cow requires 36 gallons of water per day, which is approximately 46 million gallons of water that is just required for the animals. Nothing to do with cleaning operations, which the other people are addressing. What I'm saying is, I believe that it's going to be close to 55 million gallons. Has anybody told us that the water table there that's down there will support it? Is it going to drain and ruin the Lakeville wells, which are less than two miles away? Okay, has anybody done any research? That there's 55 million gallons a year that these people have the right to take away from us. Okay, St. Joseph County presently has 1,800 producing dairy cows. Okay, that's one for every 163 acres. They want to put 35, or 350 cows per acre. Now, the problem this business has is the byproduct that the cows create, the waste that they create. Okay, everything, they're throwing sizes and all that, but I want to explain to you what those sizes are. There is going to be 27 football fields with a raw sewage sitting there on that road. And the problem they're building, the reason they're building such a large system other than what other people think, is I don't think they can get rid of it. They are going to contaminate the soil. It's going to run off, there's no way that it can't go. And I wish every one of you people would go out and look at that site. It's got to go into that ditch. That ditch goes into the yellow water. They are going to contaminate our groundwater. They, and something else that has not been addressed at all is that a cow's body temperature is 28 degrees. That's where their comfort level is. Unlike ours, we're in 72. Okay, so what they have to do is put a tremendously large amount of fans in this. No one's talked about. There's going to be over 100 fans, probably four foot in diameter, okay, in that facility, going to vent the methane gas that these cows produce, and also with the misters, trying to get the cows down to a normal body temperature or a lower body temperature, trying to decrease the ambient temperature around the cows, and they're going to use a mister. Okay, this noise level is going to be horrendous. I have been told that the fans can conceivably make a noise that is very similar to a 747 taken off. Nobody's addressed this. Okay, that seems like noise pollution. Okay, anyhow, I'm asking for help. This thing only aids two people in St. Joseph County, both of which are nonresidents. As a lifelong member of St. Joseph County, 28-year member of where I live, I need help. I need your help.
We elect these individuals to represent us. I have to believe that the majority of the citizens elect the right people. You have to have faith, I believe, in your process, otherwise it would be anarchy. So I guess all I can do is help educate them, show them what we believe are the facts, understand that there's two sides to every story, and let their intelligence and their conscience be their guide. and let their intelligence and their conscience be their guide.